The Lake Town 16th item until we start the regular meeting at 6:30, but you're welcome to hang on and listen to the workshop if you'd like.
That's no, it's good to know. I'll, I'll come back.
All right.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Victoria City Council Workshop for Monday, 27 April at 5:00 PM. We've got three items tonight. And I'll tell you what, we're going to get started in just a moment because the first item is Dana's and she had to step out just for a minute for a technical issue. So just hold tight for a moment, if you will, please, and then we'll actually get going. There we go. All right. Councilmember vote, we understand you're having audio issues. We're going to go ahead and begin with Dana. And then city, can you, I'm sorry, Alyssa rather, can you try to work with councilmember vote to fix it? All right. If we need to stop, then let us know. I'd ask councilmember vote if he wants me to wait, but I don't think we'd be able to hear him. So Dana, why don't you go ahead and start? The first item is workshop is 2 dot 1 Small Area Plan Study Findings and Recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. This evening, we're going to talk about our Small Area Plan Study and we're quick to present this information to you because it's been about a year since we kicked off this process. With me this evening, not physically present, but on our WebEx, we have Marty Doll, our Community and Economic Development Director, who will be chiming in as well as our planning consultant, Mark Costas, who I believe you're all familiar with. He'll help me fill in some more detail as we go along and participate in the helpful discussion. So, and I'll just say Marty and Mark, feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have something to add. So if we can get started with the presentation, I'm going to bring it over here. As Alyssa is helping our. I'll sit here and then I'll swap with Alyssa when she gets back. Really, our vision guides our actions and I'm going to grab my notes. All over the plate tonight, but our vision guides our actions. And I think that's important because we spent a considerable amount of time, two days last April, to talk about our strategic plan and our priorities. And with that, we came out of, came out of that two day session with a strategic plan that identified strategic priorities for them, and we will review those. And with that, that plan helped us, is going to help drive how we spend our time over the next two years. For last year, 2019, and through the rest of this year. Our first priority was to expand and enhance our local government, priority number two, DOT guiding principles. Number three, build infrastructure. And priority number four, diversify housing. And these aren't necessarily the priorities in order, they're just priorities that we've identified that were for.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's correct priority one is expand and enhance our local economy, not our local government.
Yes, yes, exactly. I hope I didn't say government, but I said economy.
You did. You said government, so.
Dana, Dana, can I jump in just a second? This is Marty. I don't think we are sharing the PowerPoint on the WebEx yet. So as soon as, as soon as Alyssa gets back into the room, she'll want to share so that the folks on the WebEx can view the visuals as well.
Yep, and Alyssa's back, so we're going to swap them. We're just rolling with it today.
I, I will note that the slide did say expand and enhance our local.
Our local economy, that's correct. Sorry about that.
No, that's right.
So, um, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for helping. And with that, within each of these strategic priorities, we identified a number, we'll call them action items or strategies that would help us see these priorities. And as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen, one of those strategies was to go into a a small area plan study. And if you want to advance to the next slide, please. We're going to talk a little bit more about that here this evening, but as you all know, in August last year, you adopted your strategic plan or your comprehensive plan, which really guides how you're going to use your land for the next 20 years. And with that, the comprehensive plan was a very intense project. You probably spent two, the better part of two years preparing for that and updating that. And what the Small Area Plan Study is going to do is just kind of do a deeper dive, that next layer of detail on a very specific area. And the area that we specified for our Small Area Plan is this triangular shape that is south of our current municipal boundary. It follows County Road 11 all the way down to the intersection of 10 and 11. And then it goes west along County Road 10. And you'll see that this area that we looked at comprises of about 300 acres and 14 separate parcels. This city, the city has long envisioned this area to be our only large block of land that we've visioned for, we'll call it, commercial, industrial, retail development. And we also have some higher density housing that we identified as being in this area. And that's why the Small Area Plan really ties nicely to expanding and enhancing our local economy. So with that, the next slide, please. What makes this site, this area ideal for that type of development is its location. And in the real estate world, everything is about location, location, location. And we really feel like this location is well suited for retail, industrial, and commercial type development. On your screen, you see a map and that map has a bunch of different colors in it. And if you can see in the center of that screen is a little pin just south of Victoria. That is the site area. And the gray area that shaded outward from that is the driving distance and how, how many people and how the area that can be reached in 30 minutes, by a 30-minute drive to the site. And this development site can be reached within 30 minutes from 770,000 different people or 310,000 households as it stands today, as well as a number of key locations, including the city of Minneapolis, the city of St. Paul, and the Twin Cities International Airport. This 30-minute drive, as you can see on the map, reaches as far north as Plymouth and Delano, as far east as Bloomington, and as far south as New Craig, and as far west as Glencoe. So it's a fairly large area. If I can draw your attention to the green portion in there, that depicts who and how many the area that can be reached within a 15-minute drive from that site. Today, there are about 138,000 households or people that live within a 15-minute drive to this site. And we anticipate that that number is going to continue to grow. In fact, over the next five years alone, that population is set in this, this area to increase 7%. So by 2024. The other thing in terms of location is that the site is located about a mile and a half from Highway 212. It's situated along the County Road 10 corridor, which is a major east-west corridor. And you're going to hear more about projected traffic volumes later this evening when our city engineer, Kara, will go through this County 10 corridor study. And it also is about three miles south of our current downtown center, which of course, we all know Highway 5 runs through there. So it is really well situated for, again, this type of commercial, retail, industrial wealth. So as we get into the Small Area Plan, before we go into that deep dive, I wanted to provide a little bit of an overview on what those milestones were as this has been about a year of process. Before we get into, before we get into anything else, let's start with just briefly reviewing those key milestones. And in June last year, we entered into a contract with Landform Consulting for the Small Area Plan Study. And in August, you all appointed a steering committee comprised of members of the community and a couple of planning commissioners and a couple of members of the council. And we'll go through that, who sat on that committee and what the role and the responsibilities were of the committee in just a moment. But the other thing was you held a joint session with the planning commission in August last year to really get some direction and kick off the process. Between September and December of last year, your steering committee met a number of times. And in September, the city, along with our consulting team, met with all the property owners in the area. And in October and November, again, the city and the consulting team met with a number of developers. So we held what's called roundtable sessions where we just had an open forum with different developments, developers of the development community to better understand what are the, what would attract development to the area? What are the strengths? What do you like about the site? And then what barriers to development do you see? And the feedback has all been incorporated into the study. And then we held a public open house and our steering committee were instrumental in making that happen and helped host that in December last year. And then that brings us to where we are today. January, we received a draft plan and that draft plan is what we're going to be doing. It's kind of that 30,000-foot discussion tonight. The details of that plan are in your agenda packet. And, and we, and that is included so the public can do that as well. So before I go forward, I'll just quickly pause as to any questions from council at this time? See, now I'll continue. So as noted last year, and obviously you appointed a 10-member steering committee to guide the study process. And I just thought it would be important to take a moment and recognize and thank the people who participated in that steering committee publicly. They spent many hours reviewing information, developing feedback and attending meetings, attending the open house. And their, their feedback and the input that they gave to the process was extremely valuable. So councilmember vote and councilmember Gregory were the two councilmembers that served. And planning commissioners, John Iverson and Laura Moore, were appointed by their planning commission colleagues to serve on the committee. We had three business representatives, John Hayes of Anki Brewing, Cal Haskin, a local Realtor, and Kristin Gioli, I hope I pronounced her name right, my apologies, Kristin, an attorney. And then we also had representation from Westbrook Community Church, representing the nonprofit area, Pastor Kevin Sharp. And then two residents, Larry Ube and Julie. Next slide, please. Early in the process, the consulting team branded the study Victoria Works. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more this evening. There's been some confusion about what is that, what does that mean? And so one of the questions we'll be asking council, if I can feedback on that as we think about marketing and promoting this site going forward. But when we refer to the Small Area Plan or Victoria Works, it's one and the same. And there is a specific website, as you can see, we've posted all information about the report or about the process on the site, www.victoriaworks.com. And that is active and all the information is there. As the process continued, the steering committee was instrumental in drafting six development goals. And those goals were to provide a framework and guidance as we went through and developed the concepts that you're going to be reviewing tonight. And from a staff perspective, we feel that these goals are actually, have done a nice job in aligning with what we've talked about in our strategic plan, in our strategic visioning sessions. And so we'll just quickly review these development goals and make sure that they align and that everybody's comfortable with them. Because if something's off, that's probably going to change a little bit of our discussion evening, this evening. So we'll start in the top, the top left in the blue box, development that is balanced over time and considers land use on the site and within the city as a whole. We think that really aligns with some of the discussions that we've had at our strategic planning sessions as we talked about expanding and enhancing our local economy. And then if we pan over to the right, development that is grounded in market realities and flexible enough to withstand change. And as, as we think about the conversations we've had on the 13 and a half acres or downtown west and developing that, we've done a lot of, a lot of work in doing market research and really we held on to that property for a long time because we had a vision of the type of development that we want. And the market just hasn't been ready up until now for that to occur. So we feel like this is consistent with what we've heard and with what your vision has been. And then if we go into that middle box in the green on the left, transportation and utility infrastructure improvements that are coordinated and phased with land use and development. Again, we think, let's think to the work that we're doing and the visioning work that we've done with running utilities south of Marsh Lake Road, we believe that's consistent. And some of the conversations we've had with the timing of putting in the structure to the site and into the site of downtown west. So we feel like this goal also aligns with what we've heard from, from council. And then the fourth goal, development that results in job creation and land use that diversifies and increases the tax base for the city. And this really speaks to and gets to the heart of what the conversations and what your vision has been for expanding and enhancing the local economy, as does the fifth one as we move down to the bottom left, the inclusion of residential development that complements employment-based uses and improves the availability of affordable housing. And that gives to strategic priority number four, which is diversification of the housing stock. And then natural features and open space corridors that are integrated into the development and connect to the city and the region. And we have heard from many residents that have shared what brought them, what attracted people to come to Victoria in the first place. And consistent with some of the ordinance reviews that we're doing now and some of the discussion that we've had recently, as the city continues to grow, we want to preserve those natural features, those things that, that have made us beautiful and made us different and unique from other surrounding communities and other communities in the state. Our rolling hills, our wooded slopes, our trees, our wetlands. And so these, this sixth goal, we felt also aligned. And I'm going to pause there and if there are any concerns or questions on those development goals, we can discuss that and figure out how to move forward. All good?
Nope, good.
Okay. So we will continue to move forward then, if you could stand to the next slide, please. We've talked about having a strong community engagement process as part of this. So again, your steering committee was comprised of this diverse group of people from the community, residents, business owners, planning commissioners, council members. And we also spent two years really doing your comprehensive plan, which really guided this area in terms of land use. And there was a lot of opportunity for the public to give input during that process. But we wanted to do a final check-in. As we finalized and we're going to bring forward these development goals for council to consider, we thought having another check-in and community feedback would be important. And so we did conduct a survey and we didn't get a lot of participation, but we did receive 53 responses. And of those responses, 87% of those responding actually lived in the city. Another 28% worked in the city. And as you can see by the green bars, each one along your X-axis there, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, those are the development goals that we just went through. And the green bars show the level of support for those types of, for each of those goals. And consistent with number one, two, three, four, and six, 92 to 98% of the people responding really thought that those goals were very, were very receptive to those goals. But the fifth one, which really speaks to the residential housing and the diversification of housing in that area, only 62% responded that this was not, that this was not as important to the other goals. So we still had support for it, it just wasn't in the nineties like everything else. And then when asked how much you support commercial office and industrial development in the city in this location, about half of the respondents of that survey supported it very much, and 5% said not at all. Slide, please. And the other thing we wanted to talk about before we can really start having our visioning conversation and look to the future, we must understand what exists today. And the slide that you're looking at right now compares what's going on today versus what our comprehensive plan says we want that area to look like in the future. And the map on the, on the left is what shows today. And in the dark, on the bottom of the screen, you can see the triangle is kind of delineated by the, a dark colored line. That is mostly agriculture, land use in the green shaded area. And there are little blotches of yellow that are integrated in there. Those yellow shades indicate single-family housing. So primarily, primarily agricultural use in this area right now. Now, if you go to the right-hand side of your screen, this is what is in your adopted comprehensive plan. And that shows a lot more color than what exists today. And the colors that should be jumping out at you are purple, which is in the left corner of, the left lower corner of that triangle. That is less employment, and we're going to talk about what that means, but that's essentially business park or industrial park. And red, which is community commercial. And then you'll see a little bit of brown in the top left-hand corner or top right-hand corner. That brown is where we're showing a concentration of high-density housing. And then the green areas that you're seeing in there are open space, wetland, parkland. So that is what you've envisioned for the next 20 years. Now I'm going to look at what that, how that compares, that 20-year vision compares to what we were talking about and what you're going to see in the study. Let's go to the next slide, please. Thank you. The one thing I want to point out here, and you can see it doesn't look too terribly different from what the comp plan looks like. But absence here is that brown area that was concentrated in the north. Now that hasn't gone away. This is mostly just the zoning. And so what you're seeing here, really in that red area, high-density housing can occur anywhere in that area. So that's why this slide in this, which you will also see in the report, doesn't show that. So we just want to make sure as you're reading through the report, you're not looking for that brown, you'll see that now. So let's go to the next slide. And after studying this area, some of the things that we've done and heard of this process, we did a market study. We've done a community survey. We talked to developers. We've talked to the community. That's the steering committee. And so we learned a whole bunch of stuff. And, and so what did we learn? We learned that market conditions will have a significant influence over how, and how the site is developed and what comes into the site, commercial, industrial, housing. And really, what will, what you'll see is that what can be supported today is very different than what we think can be supported in the future. The lack of population density in the adjacent area, so if you think about where, where we are and where development is happening. And then if you look to Oconia and Carver and Chaska, where development is happening, there is a lot, lack of population in that immediate adjacent area right now. And so that would limit what we're able to develop right now in terms of commercial retail space. The lack of freeway visibility and neighboring amenities today are also challenges to achieve the retail and business development, even hotel development. And as Kara will show you, those traffic projections are expected to increase quite significantly over the next several years. And so that could change. And then trap, well, again, traffic volumes may limit the immediate large-scale retail development. But anticipated population growth in the city, so in Victoria and our surrounding areas, will actually strengthen the demand for that type of development, that vision that we've all had. Next slide, please. Actually, we'll just skip this slide. Basically, this next slide that we just buzzed through actually is in your report. It basically just gives a little bit more detail to what we just went over. So now that brings us to the development concept. And our study, the consulting team is presenting two development concepts for council to consider at this time. And on your screen, you'll see development concept A. In the bottom left of the triangle, that southwest quadrant, you'll see, again, shaded purple. This depicts less employment. Again, it's essentially business or industrial park. It sits, this area sits south of County Road 10, and that's going to be important for several reasons. Couple other things before I move on to the other areas. I'd just like to call your attention to, and it's really hard to see on the screen, but these parcels are large. They're not broken down into smaller parcels. So when you get into development concept B, you'll see better what I mean. But really, this concept keeps these parcels pretty large. And the idea for doing that is to increase flexibility for developers that would come, maybe have something, a phase development, a master plan, if you think of your desire perhaps to attract like one large corporate campus, that, that would give more flexibility and opportunity to have development like that occur in this area. And the other areas in the pink and red, as you move north and east through the triangle, the pink and red is really a breakdown of the different types of commercial that could go in there. And community commercial, think of your office space, more suburban retail development, which focuses on larger setbacks and more parking amenities, a more orientation towards parking amenities. That's what you're seeing in the red area here. And then the brown in that northeast quadrant of the triangle is just concentrating the high-density development in that northeast quadrant. And the reason for doing this, you read into the details of the report, is because of the adjacency. On the other side of the railroad tracks, just north of there, is a lot of single-family townhome development. And then there is, you've got a nice kind of connection to that type of development. And then you've got some natural boundaries as you look at how the road comes in off County Road 11 and in that green area, which is open space. So that's why that's like that. But again, the red, that, your high-density housing can occur anywhere in that red strip. Before we move on to the next concept, if I could draw your attention to County Road 10 and how the maximum development potential is really going to be affected by the access points that you get along County Road 10, not only the number, but the type of access points. So if I can draw your attention to the lower part, the north or the southeast corner of the triangle, you can see that the County Road 11 and 10 intersection shows a signal light. As you move west along County Road 10, you'll see a right in and right out on both sides, north and south of County Road 10. And then as you continue to move west along County Road 10, you see a new full intersection access, access point. And that is, that would be future stoplight or future roundabout. But that really gives you full access going south into the development and then north into that retail and housing area. Without this full access intersection, it's going to be really hard to develop south of County Road 10 on the timeline that you're envisioning. You're really waiting on Carver to develop north from where they are. And this is outside of their, this area is outside of their 2040 comprehensive plan goal.
Dana, a couple of questions. It's back on that other intersection. Where is that? Is there, is there a crossroad there now?
I don't believe there is a crossroad there now.
There is nothing there. This is a road that would be built.
New intersection. I don't think there is.
There's nothing there, right. This intersection, this road that goes from Victoria Drive, it goes west and then turns back to Inglewood Boulevard, crosses it, that road doesn't exist today.
And then the other question that I have for you, is there any, any accommodation for public transit stations or anything in this area?
We've not gotten, we have not gotten into the details of that yet. We've not gotten, we have not gotten into the details of that yet. But we really envisioned some sort of, as a, the commercial industrial area and the connectivity and the access and closeness to Carver Transit Station and perhaps even being a point where people from the west would be coming and parking here and hopping onto the light rail into the cities and picking that up in Eden Prairie. There could be an opportunity to work with Southwest Transit, further develop that. But we have not gotten into that level.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the next couple of slides are just going to show what, what this concept envisioned for industrial park development and office park development. And Mark, if you don't mind, could this be something that you're comfortable just maybe speaking to a little bit? I think you'd probably do that better than I could.
Sure. Mayor, council, that, so the development examples that are presented, this is an example of what would be a very common, somewhat suburban industrial park development example. You can see that there's large parcels. And when we say large parcels, these parcels are 10 to 20 acres maybe in size, some of them. But there, the purple area that's in the southeast corner of this triangle is the area that, I'm sorry, southwest corner of this triangle is the area that's reflected here. The examples show single-story buildings primarily. You can see that they have kind of like a truck loading or truck access on many of the examples that are provided along with parking. The car is the focal point or vehicular access and then vehicular parking really becomes a primary focus. And then the building is set inside of that area. But it's a very typical and very common suburban industrial park layout.
Judy Black here. I have, I have a question. Is, is this just to give us an idea, so if a developer came in and had a different concept of the way they wanted to lay that out, that, that was possible?
Yeah, council member Black, mayor, members of the council. And, and that's part of what we're going to try to get out of the discussion today. If you think about what, how you develop some concepts for the thirteen and a half acre parcel, your downtown west vision, we're not quite there yet, but what we've, from a staff perspective, we visualize getting solid direction from you all so we could get as close to a concept as possible that we could use that information, your goal, how you envision this area developing, and create some marketing and promotional materials so we could go out and actively promote and market the site to developers.
Judy, the mayor, the, I think to your point, we would consider anything a developer brought in if they had to design different than what we had. This is just concepts and thoughts, but we're not going to have the infrastructure down for a while. This, I think realistically can't happen for probably at least 10 years. The, now, we may be able to get down there much faster and, and I wouldn't want to say absolutely 10 years, but it's going to be a while. But I think the key point is the, if any developer came in realistically and said, I wanted to do something now, then the city, I'm sure would, whenever that happens, the city would consider, well, how quickly can we get infrastructure there? And so we would consider it. But I, I'm assuming this is like what we see, and Mark, this question's for you. I assume this is what we see, like, in a lot of the communities that surround us, Chan Hassan, for example, on the south side of five between here, between Victoria and downtown Chan Hassan, there's a lot of that, those kinds of developments there. Do we have any idea on, in our region or in our neighboring cities, what kind of vacancy rates are in these kind of industrial developments?
Yeah, good question.
Dana, do you want me to answer? Mayor, mayor.
Yeah, Mark, I, yeah, do you have any input? Do we have any data on that as far, as far as what the occupancy is in the area?
Yeah. So mayor and council members, the, to answer the first question, mayor, this is very similar. You, you hit it right on the head, the area south of Highway 5 and kind of southeast of 101, that, that area that's back in there, you know, where the, maybe the, the post office building is, the weather center, all that area, that's very similar to what these lot sizes are and the type of buildings that at least illustrated in this graphic. As relates to the data in the Victoria Works Report, there is some vacancy rate data. The, this kind of industrial, commercial office warehouse had some of the lowest vacancies in the area, and I want to say it was in the eight to 10% range. I don't know if Marty or Dana, you have that report right in front of you. I, I was trying to open it. But, but yes, there is, there is some data of, of the region and then more specifically our area as it relates to all of the uses suggested within this concept.
So it's a good indicator that this, that if somebody came in with a product like this, they would be able to rent it.
Well, and mayor, members of the council, I think what really is going to kind of make or break something like that would be the access to the site off of County Road 10.
Right.
All right, that helps. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
And then the office, for example, and Mark, I don't know if you even have, have any other comments on this, but this really is more of your suburban retail office development. Do you have anything that you want to expand on, on that before we move on, Mark?
No, I, I think that's, that's right on it. This represents more office-type use rather than office warehouse or warehouse with smaller office, but very typical, again, suburban kind of office layout, vehicle-centric. You see a lot of parking and roads associated with it.
Thank you. So we just summarized development concept A before we get into B. Really, when we started this process, again, we looked at 300-acre area and concept A is maximizing development at about 300 or 250 acres, leaving 54 acres of wetland and open space and 3 acres of wetland. As we move to concept B, a couple things hopefully jump out at you. In concept B, let's start at the, the lower left or the southwest quadrant of the triangle. In that populated area, so that's your business industrially use, so the less employment. If you recall from concept A, we had the larger blocks of land or parcels of land. This actually shows the parcels more broken down. And then you will also see as we move north that the community commercial or the commercial retail area looks a little bit different. And your dark red areas are really concentrated around the access points to the site. So along County Road 10, along County Road 11. And that's really because as we look at the access, you've got the full intersection at County Road 10 and 11 and a right-in, right-out and another right-in, right-out as you move further west down the road. So that's really going to, going to change how this area will develop as access will be key and develop for people coming from the west. Getting on that east side or the, you know, going north of 10 is going to be difficult and people coming from the west or driving west from the east, getting to that, that south part of the development will be a, a somewhat of a challenge. So those are the primary differences. Again, it's still showing that concentration for the connectivity portion, the concentration of the higher density housing in that northeast quadrant of the triangle, but really, again, it can happen anywhere within that red area. And then as we look at, I'm sorry, was there a question?
This is, this is Judy. I, I had a question about that right-in, right-out. Is that something that the county has determined is the way it's going to run? Or is this just a concept?
So this is a concept right now, and Cara is going to get into some of the, at our next, Cara is going to follow this presentation and she's going to get into the details of that. And when we come back as part of our discussion, we're going to ask you to hold comment on the access portion of this discussion and have that as part of Cara's presentation because it all kind of fits together. So we'll get there.
Okay.
And then concept, going back to development concept B, again, of the 300 acres, it's very similar in terms of the developments that can occur, the development potential on the site, 253 acres versus the 250 that you saw in concept A. So very similar development potential. So as we get into our conclusions, before we get into the council's discussion, which is where we want to spend the rest of our time, from a staff perspective, we feel that both concepts A and B will achieve council's development goals. If you go back to those six goals that we talked about and like, and we think align with your conversations and your vision, they are grounded in the market realities of today and they certainly would result in diversifying your tax base. So all part of your strategic priority plan and your development goals. Where from a staff perspective, we felt the study fell a little short was that if these concepts didn't really create a place that's unique to Victoria and focused more on what could be developed today rather than what could be envisioned for the future. And what do we mean by that? We're going to show you some development examples. And in these examples, these are developments that are unique to cities. That, that they're unique to their individual communities. And if you say this particular development, you know that that's related to that particular community. So we're not going to be necessarily asking that this is the type of development we want on this site. What we're trying to communicate is just illustrate how city officials had a vision and created a place that's identifiable for their community. So as we go to the next slide, Centennial Lake City Dyna is one example. This is considered the heart of South Salem. There are corporate offices, apartments, restaurants, shops, walking paths, pavilions. In the summer, people can rent paddles. They've created these lakes. They can play putt-putt golf, you can fish, you can do sailboat racing, you can go to an art fair. And in the winter, you, they turned this into a city ice skating rink. The next slide is Arbor Lakes and Maple Grove.
Doesn't Mother Nature turn it into a skating rink?
That too.
Yes.
Arbor Lakes has, is in Maple Grove. There are over 250 businesses in this area and it consists of three distinct areas. The shops, the fountains, and Main Street, if you're familiar with that development. The next slide is West End in St. Louis Park. So this was a redevelopment project and I don't have a map that you can really tell up on where it is here, but it's sandwiched between I-394 and Highway 100. And here, the focus was more on entertainment and creating an experience for people. And what people tend to like about this, there are office towers, hotels, apartment buildings, shops, dining and entertainment. And people like that downtown urban feel and design to the site, but there's more of a suburban parking feel. You've got ramps, you have on-street parking, you've got parking lots. So you have the density of the city, but a suburban convenience and all those parking amenities are free. The next slide is heart of the city in Burnsville. Without a natural historical downtown, the city actually created its own downtown. It's a 54-acre area which includes public art, a city park, a thousand-seat performing arts center, which also serves as an event center. The park was also a, the first town square-style park in the suburbs of Minneapolis and St. Paul. The heart of the city includes apartments, townhomes, condos, so a mix of rental and owner, occupied housing, shopping, dining, retail, an amphitheater, flash pad, and then ample open green space for community gatherings. And then staff also put, the next slide, downtown west of Victoria. So you are trying to create a vision, you have created a vision that hopefully people will identify with the city of Victoria. So that's just another example. And one of the questions that we'll have for you as we get into this discussion is, did you want to try to achieve all of your development goals and create something that's a little bit more unique to Victoria as well? So on that note, we're going to go into the council's discussion. And the first question for you is, is there a desire to develop the site as proposed in the studies, the concepts A or B, which of course would be grounded in the market realities and would allow you to diversify your tax base? Or is there a desire to create a place that's more unique to the city, which is also grounded in the market reality and would accomplish the reputation of your tax base?
Okay. Thank you, Dana. The, let's go ahead and start with the folks on the phone. Judy, would you like to ask questions or make any comments and begin the discussion, please?
Well, actually, I would like to hold off because I'd like to hear from
That's fine.
Tom Gregory and Tom Vogt since they were on the, on the task force.
Sure, that works. Uh, Tom Vogt, would you like to begin, please?
Okay. I guess I'm the guinea pig. Let's see. Well, first of all, these concepts that we're showing of, you know, these exotic visions, I've been to most of them. The thing that strikes me about the surroundings of those areas is they're extremely high population density. And it, not only the density, they are places that people pass through all the time. The Dyna Lakes area, Centennial Lakes, that is just beautiful. And I've walked all around it, but I mean, they have a captive audience that's huge. And I think all of these are. One of the things we should look at with these visions that we just, you know, looked at is how many acres they used and what the population density statistics are there. Because we could probably do something yet in Victoria, but you know, how long is it going to take to get that kind of traffic through Victoria and population density? So I, that's a question in my mind. I was on a committee on the task force and there were some problems in doing what we did for a couple of reasons. It was, the traffic situation was unknown. The county hadn't really completed their study. And it was problematic just from the start, the way it looked. And so that's one of the reasons, one of the things, the other problem was, I don't know if anybody shared it, shared this concern but me, but we kept talking about 300 acres. And that sounds like a usable, a nice amount, except you got 54 acres of wetland, you've got a church that's on 26 acres, and then you have some right-ofways. So you have over, you have like 100 acres that you really can't even think about. So it's really 200 acres. And then if you break that down, we've got it sliced in half, just roughly, half is commercial and half is residential. So again, what you're able to do commercially acreage-wise is limited. So I, I thought that was problematic and I, I thought when we put together the comprehensive plan, we might've missed the vote that we should have had a much larger piece of land laid out. I thought of the fact that north of the property, the railroad tracks, you got that whole corridor with the power lines. And we're saying that we're going to have residential there, not just, you know, actually the sparse residential, the, the really good residential is going to be there. And I can't imagine building a nice house underneath a power line. So there's, there's issues there. You know, I thought the concepts that were done were probably realistic in the context of what we know today. And it's very hard to create this exotic vision, you know, without, I mean, this, this section of land hasn't even started yet.
Yeah.
And we're having trouble with the, we're having trouble with 13 acres. So. with the, we're having trouble with 13 acres. So that's kind of my thoughts at the moment.
Okay.
The concepts.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Tom Gregory, the comments, questions?
I thought, I thought Councilmember Vogt articulated pretty well. There were a lot of difficulties trying to put this pencil to paper on this blank slate. And we were, and we still haven't gotten a full picture of what these access points are going to look like, what, what they can look like, what, how much access the county is going to grant us on these. That is going to be a challenge. I think what we put together was simply was practical. It was, it was what we know could work, what we know has worked in, in places like Chaska. And it would certainly generate the tax revenue, which was, which was fairly high on my priority list. But it's, I concur, it's not very exciting. If there is a way that we could somehow bring some people in here that could generate maybe a more creative vision, that would be great. But I don't know what the timeframe would look like. I mean, if we had somebody come in and say, you know, here's what I'm looking at, here's what I'm considering, could this work? Great. But I don't know, I don't know if we have the time to wait to bring in something perfect and put off the practical. I'm not sure if we have that, that time. This is, we've been trying to get the creative vision on the 13 acres. And that's, that's, we're 10 years down the road on that. We still have broken ground there. So I like the idea. I like the, the concept of trying to get more creativity in this area, but I don't know how practical that is.
All right, thank you. Judy?
Okay. So am I understanding that you're feeling more that concept A would be the way to begin? Or do you think that we should leave both concepts on the table until we talk to developers to see what would transpire?
Is that a question for me?
Either Tom.
Okay. I'm, I'm kind of sitting back a little bit, waiting to see what developers would come forward with. And, and concept A, concept B, again, is partially driven by what the county is going to allow us on access points.
Right. Okay.
A lot of that's still unknown.
Yeah, I agree because, yeah, that, that, that concept B is nice, except that write-in, write-out only, I don't understand how that could even work. The only way I could see it even working would be with roundabouts at those two, two sections. Otherwise, concept B would, they wouldn't be able to get in and out. So I think, I think it's too soon for me to decide between concept A or B. So I don't know how, how to give you direction on this at this time.
All right. Thank you. Deb?
Yeah, I think, I think everybody kind of hit the nail on the head. We've got a couple of things we don't know. So do we have any idea when the county is going to determine what our access is going to be? And so I want that information. And then I'd also like to know, do we have the ability to influence that based on?
And that's what we'll be discussing with Kara next.
Okay, terrific. And then I think, you know, from my perspective, absolutely, I'd really love to have something that's more unique to Victoria. But I also am very grounded in the reality of where the market will drive. And so if we could come up with something really amazing that fills an unmet need in the region, and I think we have to think about this regionally. I don't think we have to think about this in Victoria. I think you have to think about it regionally. And I would point to the curling rink in Chaska as a great opportunity, something similar, not, not a curling rink, obviously, but something that has a need and an interest and is unmet in this region. And if we can create that kind of an opportunity, that, that I think will drive a lot of what happens next and create some of this uniqueness that we want. I think all of our egos are driven by the fact that we love where we live and we want everybody else to love it as well. And so I think if we can think about what that opportunity or that unmet need is, that could anchor that would be a really, my key to understanding what that is. And then we have to remain flexible. I think there's still yet, you know, we don't know where we're headed with our economy currently. That's, that's a big unknown for a lot of people. We don't know and we don't know what that's going to look like. So I, I would caution us to get really not too grounded in one idea or one concept and encourage us to remain flexible. And, you know, again, there, there's the unknown about what the timeline is. We don't know if this is, you know, three years out, five years out, 10 years out. And a lot of that is, is driven. So I think we've got a couple of things I think we need to work out. I think obviously from my perspective, I'd love something that was more unique and really creative and really, really a landmark kind of an opportunity. But I also understand that we're going to have to have something that sort of drives that.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments. I agree with most of what I heard. To me, concept A and B are basically the same thing. There's subtle differences, but they're basically the same thing. I love the idea of something like the Centennial Lakes, but there's two major, actually three major issues I think facing us. Number one, the fact that we've got a major east-west thoroughfare that splits the middle of it. Number two, I think Councilmember Vogt is right. We don't have the density of housing to drive, which is, anybody that comes in and develops is going to look for that density. And it's, it's going to be at least a decade or more. And then this whole thing with the COVID, you know, I don't know if I'd want to be in commercial real estate now as an investor because everybody's now working from home and a lot of companies are thriving doing that. I wonder how much demand there's going to be for commercial rental space. And so I'm, I'm just thinking until this settles out, and that may take a few years, we may not know. Developers may be shying away from anything like this. Conceptually, I love the idea. I'm almost thinking at this point, it, it, we did this, it's something to chew on, it's, it's got possibilities. I think the most likely use because of the railroad, the high power lines and County Road 10 splitting it, is going to be the single story kind of mixed industrial use that we talked about. As much as I would like to see something else, I just, I don't know if there's enough land there for somebody to come in and do a Centennial Lakes. Although I think it's a valid question. If Centennial Lakes is 300 acres or 400 acres, I'd like to see that compared to what we basically got is 200 acres that split into pieces, right? Maybe what we can do, and as I heard, I heard the discussion, I thought maybe we could go west, in which we could get contiguous pieces if, if we could come up with a concept that made sense. But of course, if we go west, that's going to be even that much longer for us to get out there with infrastructure and everything else. And that's just going to delay it more. If we went north, maybe we could do that. Maybe there's something there that we could do sooner, but then we're moving away from County Road 10 and they want quick access to the roads. So, you know, that has some drawbacks too. So I don't have, I don't know what the answers are. I do think that this is good to get, have for developers to look at, to think about. And I would love to see if we could find some sort of comment, Deb's to your comments, and Tom Vogt, you know, our version of Centennial Lakes, right? And of course, it has to be unique. And I think you're also right in thinking, we've got to think bigger than Victoria. We've got to think regionally. We're going to bring in something that's outside of it. So just a few comments. I'm not sure. I'm curious whether the council thinks, now that we have this, do we want to put a lot more staff time or money into this going further? Or do we want to just kind of suspend this and kind of see what develops here? Any thoughts on that? Anybody on the phone? Anybody want to speak to that point?
I'll speak to it.
Okay.
I think you hit the nail on the head that there are so many unknowns that we have a plan that considerable effort was put into. And I think what Dana presented could be looked at as a concept C. You know, it'd be great if we could come up with, what the concept would be. And it probably should be something that complements the assets that the city already has. Look around us, is there something that would go well with everything else around here? But I can't see beating our heads against the wall. We're high probability of in some kind of recessionary period. The last one took 10 years to dig out of. We have such unknowns that I can't see the city staff spending huge resources on this right now. That's my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Tom Gregory, thoughts?
No, it was, it was a good exercise. I think we, we came up with, with some fairly good thoughts and ideas and plans. But in all reality, considering the circumstances, I think, you know, put this up on the shelf, people come forward, great. If we can throw out some feelers now and then on, we have this land available, just keep, just keep putting it out there, but not spending a whole lot of time on it, I would, would be my thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Judy.
I have to agree. I think, I think Deb brought up a very important point with being able to find what the need would be so that we could move forward and create that, create of uniqueness that we're looking for. So with the way the situation is now with the economy, I would say, yes, we will have to wait, but we can still keep our eyes open for opportunities in the future.
Thank you, Deb.
I concur with all of you.
All right. I think we're all in agreement then. So I don't think anybody in the council, and jump in if you disagree, but would disagree that if the staff want to spitball something and come up with a concept C, you can kind of float that. But for the most part, we'll kind of suspend this, not put a lot of time and effort in it to do more. But if you come up with a concept C and you kind of float it amongst the council members, if there's some reality to it, then we can always bring it back at that time. Counsel, any objections to that?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Dana, did you need anything else?
Well, Mayor members of the council, I, you know, just a couple of comments before we wrap up. And I'm not going to go through the rest of the slides, but I think we kind of hit all of that, with the exception of the marketing piece, which is kind of slowing down the pace a little bit that's less important unless you're, Victoria Works does create some confusion. So maybe I'll just ask the council-minded staff maybe work more on the creative behind the scenes, maybe rebrand the area or something that's a bit more meaningful to the type of development. If the council is not opposed to that, we can take that aside and bring something back to you.
Yeah, I, let me, let me check. I don't have any objections to that, Deb?
No.
None. Anybody on the phone? Anybody have any objections to what Dana suggested?
No, I think it's a great idea.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. And then we can certainly, to your point, we could certainly, as we move forward and revisit this from time to time or over the next several years, we can come back and really envision a larger area. So we've selected a small site to start with. It doesn't mean we're constrained by those boundaries today. So we can continue to envision or envision a larger area. And we can certainly, to some of the points that we, that I heard here this evening, explore how to create more of a vision that's still anchored in all of those realities or grounded in those realities, that meets our goal and would have some unmet, serves the purpose or create an opportunity or unmet regional needs. I don't think that staff, heavy lifting has a little bit of follow-up and cleanup that needs to be done. And we're happy to spend a little bit more time to bring something back to you in the future. And we could discuss that. And I can bring, discuss kind of strategies that are one-on-one to see if we bring it back at the workshop or we delay it in 2021.
All right, perfect. I think that works. The council, any final comments on item 2.1? None. Hearing, hearing none. Then let's go ahead and move to 2.2. Kara, are you on?
I'm here, and hopefully you can hear me.
Yep.
I magically unmuted myself. Okay, Mayor members of the city council, this is Kara Garin, city engineer, porning in on the next element of this agenda item. I am going to share my screen. I have way too many screens open, but hopefully we have the right one here. So you, a number of questions came up relative to the last item pertaining to what's happening with the Highway 10 corridor study. So this, this was a nice segue for us to introduce a couple of areas that we need to provide feedback to the study. So just by way of background, this slide is just a refresher on what is in the county's comprehensive plan for Highway 10. So Highway 10 from Highway 212 to County Road 43 is referred to as an A minor, A minor expander. And as such, access spacing is limited to one, one mile full intersection spacing. So there isn't supposed to be any full access intersections within a mile of each other. And then half mile secondary intersection spacing. So that would refer to a write-in or write-out. The comprehensive plan notes the facility type to be a four-lane county road. And then I might come back to this slide later, but I just included a table of what the traffic volumes are from a planning perspective for those different roadway types. And this is just the same slide of one of the concepts, in case we want to access it that you just covered in the last part of the workshop. So this slide here represents some corridor planning, traffic projections for County Road 10. So to orient you here, this blue line, hopefully you can see my mouse here, running north-south is County Road 11. County Road 10 is, and the section we're looking at is the section highlighted with this sort of green highlight around it. This intersection over here on the west end is County Road 43 going north. So that's the westerly boundaries of the study. The county has run a number of traffic forecasts. The scenario that's primarily being used for planning purposes is referred to as scenario 3.5. So under that scenario, the projected traffic on County Road 10 is 16,800 in the area of the small area plan that you were just looking at. But one of the things that the county also did was they ran a scenario that would really represent whole buildup of Carver County. And under that scenario, the traffic projections jump up to 39,000. By comparison, future Highway 212 under that scenario would have 63,000 cars on it. So these are pretty significant traffic volumes projected. So there are two different things that are being contemplated by the study. And first is this access spacing question that you all were just touching on. So again, you have the intersection of County Road 10 and 11 on the right side of the page. And we're really talking about today, the area between County Road 11 and the railroad tracks. The distance between County Road 11 and the railroad tracks is less than one mile. So the county's starting point is that the only thing that would be allowed between County Road 11 and the railroad tracks is one secondary access. So that would be one access for write-in, write-out only. Now, through the corridor study, we have an opportunity to have dialogue about that and seek to find some resolution for what we think is needed for access spacing. So to date, the city, city staff has been indicating that we need a full access intersection in order to accommodate development in this area, particularly as it pertains to the parcels on the south side of County Road 10. If we, if we don't have full access, we're having a hard time envisioning how this area really could develop. You know, everything south of this boundary is outside of our control. It's in Harvers Growth Area. It's in Harvers Growth Area and it's um outside of their 2040 boundary. And um, forgetting the name of the church, but there is a new church planned in this area too, which, um, you know, makes, with these wetlands and the proposed church here, makes it hard to envision how another access could get out to County Road 11 in this location. So, um, you know, what, what we're looking to confirm with the city council is that the city council concurs with city staff that a full access intersection is important in this location, um, so that we can provide that feedback back to the county. So I think I'll pause on access quickly before I move on to the typical section to see if anybody has any questions or, you know, doesn't agree that a full access intersection would be important to us there.
No, I agree, you have to have that. Sorry, this is Judy.
Okay, okay. Did you agree or disagree that we should?
No, I agree. There's, there's no way to be able to access that southern section if, if they can only come in from the west. I mean, they're not making it easy for us to develop that with what they're talking about.
Yeah, but I think we're also putting the cart before the horse, demanding an intersection for something that we don't have any idea if it'll ever be developed that way.
So how do we, how do we talk to the county about it then?
What, Kara, what's the county, did they give any timeline at all? I mean, how realistic is their County Road 10 development plans in terms of uh, in the, in the near future? Is this 10 years from now or what?
Um, so the implementation plan will be developed next in the study, but they are looking at intersection improvements today to County Road 10 and 11. Um, so you know, the scope of those intersection improvements starts to inform um what this next phase looks like. Um, the priority for 10 is the intersection of 10 and 11, and then 10 back to, to 12 is nearer term. As you, as you progress then to the west, it gets more long range. So kind of after the railroad tracks, we are probably talking about quite a ways in the future. Um, but you know, the corridor study, once it's adopted, does, does drive their response to any sort of development applications that might come in. So, um, even if it's longer term from a planning perspective, it, you know, it'd be important to differentiate between a secondary or a full access. And, and that'll be highlighted a bit too, as we look at the typical sections on the next couple of slides.
What's been your experience in getting the county to, to modify their requirements in, in the sense of a, uh, two fully controlled intersections being required to be a mile apart? Does the county ever issue waivers or, or, or modify those rules, if you will?
Yeah, I would guess I would note that the city of Chaska has a full access intersection that's less than a mile from 212, that's in a corridor that has the same designation. So, um, I, you know, I do think that a corridor study presents an opportunity for compromise, but you know, the city needs to put together what they're looking for.
Yeah, go ahead, Deb.
Um, I think we should, I think we should pursue a full access. Um, if, if we actually have a right-in, right-out.
My other question is if it's only right-in, right-out, are they talking about medians in the middle with turn lanes?
Judy, Judy, hang on a second, Deb was, uh, Deb was speaking, go ahead.
Can you hear me, Judy?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, I, I, I think we need to pursue a full access. It's a lot easier to back off of a full access than it is to try and get one implemented later. And I think we should try and pursue that full access. To Judy's point, unless you're coming, you know, if you think about industrial and big trucks coming in and out, I don't know how you're going to get people coming from the east to flip around and come into a right-in, right-out. I, I would insist on a full access.
Right, I, I, I don't disagree because we can always take it out. So it's, what we're talking about, better to be safe than sorry. Judy, you had something to add, go ahead.
Um, well, Deb kind of answered my question on that because I was concerned about how with the right-in and right-out only, would this be a divided highway with a median and turn lanes so that they can U-turn? And how would the trucks be able to do that? Yeah.
Judy, you're breaking up a bit. Was your question really, I think what you're asking is, uh, well, here, instead of me trying to interpret it, can you say it again? You were breaking up, at least it was hard for us to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are.
Okay, so, oh, I must have had paper on my microphone. Okay, so I was just asking, because they're doing right-in, right-out only, are they, is this because they're considering a median with, and with turn lanes so that they can do U-turns?
Which, which really is a perfect segue to my next slides, if you can all hear me now.
And how would that work with trucks?
Okay.
I think we all agree that we should go for the full access.
Right, that's what I wanted to confirm. Folks, hang on, that's what I wanted to confirm. Councilmember vote says yes, Deb says yes, I say yes, Judy you say yes. Tom, do you, Tom Gregory, do you agree?
Yeah, if we're going to have any hopes of any successful commercial retail, uh, a full access on both County Road 10, County Road 11 are going to be pretty imperative, I believe. Um, just one, one quick question. What is, what is the distance from the County Road 10, County Road 11 intersection to where it intersects with the railroad tracks?
It is, oh, I have that written down here somewhere. It's like 3,600 feet, so a mile would be 5,280 and it's 3,600. Yeah.
Less than 230. Uh, all right, and, and yeah, this was part of the challenge for that whole small area plan is we're very much in the upper air, up in the air on what the county's going to grant us. We're not even sure we can get a right-in, right-out, are we?
Um, they have indicated that we would get a right-in, right-out because it would meet the secondary access spacing guidelines.
Gotcha, okay.
What does the county say about the railroad tracks? I would think in 10 years, that's really going to be a problem.
Um, you know, as part of the study, they are looking at what it would take to, what it would look like if we had to go over the tracks with the road.
With a bridge.
Yeah, but you know, we aren't, the, yeah, we aren't quite there yet, but they are looking at that. In which case, you know, what they've brought up is would there be an opportunity to get a residential street across the tracks, you know, on the backside of this development to then be able to connect the development into the city's collector system north of the tracks? Um, you know, in our experience, it's very challenging to get a new railroad crossing. I could only see that happening if they were eliminating a crossing on 10, but, um, there's a lot of wetlands that make that pretty challenging through that area.
I see. Okay.
So it's a nice segue though to the typical section. So as I indicated, the comprehensive plan depicts this as a four lane county road. Um, and what I'm showing you here are just some typical cross-sections out of the county's comprehensive plan for what a four lane road might look like. So this first page is showing a four lane rural section. So you would have ditches and no curb and gutter with the trail on the north side of the road. Um, this is just the same thing, only at an intersection where you would have left and right turn lanes. Um, this next page is showing a four lane divided urban section, so using curb and gutter instead of that rural kind of feel to it. Um, when I look at this rural section road, it kind of reminds me of what Highway 5 looks like through Chanhassen, where you've got that, you know, median, depressed median on the inside. Um, then they've also shown a six lane urban section. So part of what's happening is with the traffic projections, whoops. Um, what, when the county, and you've all heard Lyndon say this before, when the county is planning for right-of-way preservation and long-range road planning, Lyndon's looking at what projections are on a 50-year basis, you know, not the 20-year basis that the county comprehensive plan takes into consideration. So what he's been signaling for County Road 10 is wanting, particularly at the intersection with County Road 11, is wanting to preserve right-of-way and plan the improvements for a six lane highway through there. Um, and so the consultant team put together some scenarios of how that might get constructed. And, and why this is becoming so important is if they look at making intersections to 10 and 11 in the near term, they need to understand what the roadway corridor is going to look like, even if they aren't building all the way to the railroad tracks right-of-way. Um, but they need to know what kind of typical section they're tying into. So what they're suggesting is that they would like to build a four lane rural divided roadway that can be expanded, so here's the rural one, with a 52-foot wide median that could then be expanded to a six lane by adding additional lanes in the future towards the center of the road. Then the median would reduce down to 28 feet. But for some period of time, we'd have this 52-foot wide median down the middle of the road. Um, the, the image on the left is showing how that could be conceived as an urban section with urban gutters. So you have curb here instead of a ditch over here.
Okay, Kara, Kara, hold, hold tight for a second. Uh, we're, uh, we're going to run out of time here. The, uh, unless there's additional comments, I'd like to just quickly poll the council to see if they agree with the approach Kara just suggested. Um, if you have comments, I'd just ask council members to please be brief so that we can try to finish this section. Um, the, uh, council member vote, would you care to go first? Would you agree with what Kara was saying and, and make that our recommendation?
What exactly would the recommendation be? That we, we want the extra intersection assumed and we agree with there's, with the road and the number of lanes, what, what are we talking about?
Yeah, that's exactly it. Where it's rural with four lanes with the ability to expand to six lanes, isn't, that's what Kara was asking.
One of the, one of the things that I heard at the last meeting we had with the county is, you know, there was, there was some outrage or shock at learning that, uh, that Engler Boulevard would have turned into four and six lanes. And, uh, is that, is that the reality or is that some kind of, uh, because it takes so much land? That's cutting into, that's cutting into our development, have we even computed that?
Right.
Yes, sorry, Mayor.
Kara, hang on, Kara, hang on. The, uh, uh, I hadn't heard that, but if there's other discussions, then let's not try to go through this quickly. Let me, uh, uh, back off and ask council, let, let Kara keep going through. We'll just extend a little bit into the council, uh, time, uh, so that we can get through this. I don't want to cut this discussion short if there's further discussion needed. So with that, Kara, go ahead and take back and, and keep going.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So yeah, this is the county's proposal of how to build the road today and preserve it to, for a six lane. I will note that from, from a staff perspective, and I, I guess I'll first speak for myself personally, I'm having a hard time envisioning, um, how we're going to need six lanes. So even under their full build-out scenario, they're showing a traffic projection of 39,000. And that's when all of Victoria and all of Waconia have been built out. And when I go to their table, um, they show that a four lane urban or a four lane rural can accommodate traffic, you know, up to that 35,000, 41,000-ish range. Um, it's, it's, you know, it's a pretty, not only is it a wide right-of-way, but I, when you're envisioning this, um, you know, 52-foot wide, a 52-foot wide median is a pretty wide piece of land down the middle of our development area with, um, development on the north side and the south side. And certainly Mark Cultis would be in a better position to comment on how that might fit into the context of the neighborhood, which is not an engineering, um, concept. Staff's been leaning towards a position that we'd certainly be comfortable with planning for a four lane road, but just aren't quite there yet for the six lane. And I, Mark, I don't know if he has anything to add to that, but.
Uh, Mayor and Council, Mark Cultis, planning consultant. Yeah, if you want, um, just to touch on a couple of things real quick. Um, the six lane need is outside of the county's comprehensive plan and the city's comprehensive plan as it relates to any kind of projected growth that would achieve those volumes. Um, when you start getting into volumes for the six lane corridor, you're talking about a similar type of road to Highway 212 at, um, at the County Road 10 intersection or what will be the intersection. So you're talking about a pretty robust, um, amount of traffic. And that, it is a good point that the six lanes, planning for the six lanes eats into quite a bit of that corridor. Um, and that's why, from the staff perspective, promoting a four lane section with it, with an urban character to it reduces the overall width of corridor that's needed. And then promoting that full access point, um, at least in the planning stages now, um, is really important to provide the city with the flexibility to develop the, um, the, um, small area into whatever it is that, that wants to become. But without that full access upfront, you're going to, you're going to limit your potential development of that site. So those were my only comments.
And that was the end of my planned presentations.
So Kara, on, on the diagram that's up on the screen, there's, there's one for 118 feet, one for 212 feet, one for 182 feet for the right-of-way, right? Which is the one then for like, for example, rural four lane without the ability to expand to six lane, right? Um, what do we connect, that's 212? Am I reading this right?
Yeah, so I'll just step back through. So this is the 212 right-of-way needed for a rural section road to be expanded to the six lane versus 182-foot right-of-way if we're going to have an urbanized section with curb and gutter. So that, that, you know, using that urban suburban brings that impact down from 212 feet to 182 feet.
So what's 118?
Uh, yeah.
On their sheet, I'm just.
Right there. Right on the, right on the drawing, 118.
That I believe is the existing right-of-way.
Is 118, is 118 feet enough for a four lane divided highway?
So for a four lane urban roadway, um, they want, yeah, under their typical scenario, they want 140 feet if there's a trail on the north side.
All right, so go back to the diagram again. So they've got 118 feet under that scenario, they'd have to go, they'd have to expand out another basically 22 feet.
Yeah.
All right, I wanted to understand how we read it. Okay, so what is it that you need from the council tonight?
Um, you know, I think just any initial feedback you have on the right-of-way width is helpful, you know, or the preservation for a six lane. But if, if we've ran out of time, that's certainly something we can bring back at a future meeting. We don't have to get back to them today, so.
Yeah, we can, it, it takes us 10 minutes to switch over, so we'll just be a little late with the council meeting. The, um, let me open it up to the council for what we think we should ask the county for in, in terms of right-of-way. Um, for the council members on the phone, anybody want to go first?
Um, this is Judy. I, I believe that the four lane is adequate. I don't know, he wants a lot of land and I don't think that it's, it's warranted. I don't, so I believe in the, um, the full build-out for the turn and four lane.
So that would be, Kara, is that the 140 feet then? Judy, do you want the trail on the north side?
Well, they're always, they always want a trail.
So that, that would be 140 feet, is that right, Kara?
That's what we're looking at, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you Judy. Tom vote, Tom Gregory?
This is, this is council member vote. I'm confused by the diagram, 140 feet sounds good to me, but where, where's the other number come from that's showing there? The 140 feet is not even shown.
That's, it's in this little fine print down here at the bottom of this four lane typical section. So the right of way width, if you're going to have trails on both sides would be 150 feet. If you're only going to have one trail, it'd be 140 and with no trails would be 130. This is their typical right of way section from the comprehensive plan.
Well, we should calculate how much 50 or 60 feet times, what is it, three quarters of a mile? I mean, this is a huge amount of land we'd be reducing our development by. And I think we have a shrinking amount of acreage to begin with. So this, I would say the narrowest four lane road would be the best.
And that would mean without a trail then, right?
Well, I would, this is me talking, yes, there'd be a trail. We, you can't, you can't have a road with that much traffic where you have no places for pedestrians or runners or anything like that, or people that aren't comfortable on their bicycles on the street. It's unsafe.
Right, I got it. So Kara is an inaccurate statement to say that the narrowest corridor for a four lane divided highway with a trail, the, the narrowest corridor is 140 feet?
Per the county's typical sections, yes.
Okay. So council member vote, 140 feet is what you think we should ask the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council member Gregory.
Sounds like a six lane road is being pretty aggressive. I can understand from Lyndon's perspective, you ask for everything and, and hope for the best. And currently, if I'm not mistaken or understanding this right, currently they have 118? Is that correct?
Yeah, it does, it does vary along the corridor. So I, all I can say is in this particular area shown on the graphic, it's 118, which is, you know, in the area where we're talking about, but it does vary throughout.
Okay, so if we're looking at expanding that to 11 feet on both sides, that seems reasonable. 140 feet with a trail is, is where I would land.
All right, thank you, Deb.
I would agree.
I also agree, 140 feet. So it sounds like it's unanimous Kara, and that's what you needed from us tonight?
That is what I needed, Mayor, thank you.
Yep. Real quick, Council, we have another item on here. I move that we table item 2.3, potential sale of vacant city owned lots to a date into the future when Dana can get it rescheduled in a workshop. Can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
The questions, comments from council members on the phone, any objections?
None.
Hearing none. Let me get a roll call vote on that. Judy, yea or nay on the motion to table 2.3?
Aye.
Thank you, council member, council member vote, yea or nay?
Aye.
Thank you, council member Gregory?
Aye.
Thank you, Deb. Mayor votes aye, so that's 2.3 is tabled. We'll bring that back so we can get it scheduled. With that, can I ask a council member to give me a motion to adjourn the workshop? I'm sorry, but before we do that, just for those of you that are listening, once we adjourn the workshop, the line will go dead. It takes us about 10 minutes to get set up for the city council, to get the video reset and the audio reset. So once we adjourn, hang tight and we'll get back online as quick as we can with.
So we have to re, do we have to go through the whole process of reentering again?
Nope, you guys can stay on the line and, and we'll, we'll come back here shortly. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn the workshop, please?
I'm moved.
That was from Deb, thank you Deb. Can I get a second? Council member vote, second. Without objection, let me do a roll call vote. Judy, aye, vote please. Thank you, council. I shouldn't tell you how to vote, that's not what I meant to do. Council member Gregory?
Aye.
Thank you, council member vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Deb.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, we are adjourned, thank you.